Yeah, these are, these, I mean, if you look at this, this is a very gentle curve. It's not a.
And so I agree with you on the really sharp curve. It's too bad because there's people right around the corner that frankly have to get off and walk. But this doesn't look terrible to me.
I think we should make Jackson Road follow that contour.
Jackson Road follow the contour.
Yeah.
Curved contour, yeah.
Oh, you should because it is.
It's not a car stand.
You're darn right.
So what about. Okay, we're getting off topic. For, for me, yeah, go ahead.
I'm, I'm wondering, because I actually use a dealership on Jackson Road and whenever I drop my vehicle off, I take the bus into work downtown. Did you ever explore possibly with AATA a bus stop here? And I, I have to tell you, it is very dangerous when I, I won't mention the dealership, but when you walk across that boulevard, there is no striped lanes or anything.
I do that.
You're playing Frogger to get over there to take the bus downtown. So if there was something about, if you could explore possibly a bus stop, but then, you know, a crosswalk or something striped to make it safe as you're getting your, if you're gonna take the bus to the downtown.
I think there's a desire to put a bus stop on the frontage. We have no issues with that. We hadn't necessarily pursued it, but it's really not an issue.
Yeah, we did just go through, the trustees just went through selecting some sites and getting some stops put in, but I don't know what their process was.
Issue about net zero stuff was pervious pavement. That's detailed in Mr. Lu's. Well, it went away in their plans and they have an explanation of why it went away on page three of the memo. Um, is that something that you're comfortable with?
Yeah, it's, it's very valid. If you don't have the infiltration, you end up having it, the pervious payment doesn't work.
There's some wet stones there.
We just end up with a bathtub that's always full of water. Uh, so we replaced that with the enhanced bio soil system and some of the more naturalized stormwater management.
And I have some questions. Uh, first of all, you talked about carbon neutral footprint. Where have you done this before? With you?
With you? We haven't. This is our first.
First time, okay. So how would you compute the carbon neutral footprint formula? How does it work? There's a lot of. Uh, high level, high level.
Uh, basically, there's a baseline model. So our entire project is energy model in the computer. It's not just calculations on paper or whatever. We have a baseline and we compare our energy use to that baseline. Baseline is set by, was it, I don't, I almost said.
C S.
Yeah.
By who?
It, it's a, it, the EPA does a survey of commercial buildings by use type and they set a baseline.
So our baseline score is fifty five. Our Mercedes building comes in at forty five point two.
Okay.
So we're less. Our baseline for BMW comes in at fifty three point four, slightly less.
Who would monitor this on a year, who would monitor this on a year to year basis?
Well, that's where the, uh, Rakesh, that's where the off, the, the renewables comes in because there's a, an overall energy use projection from the model. And then when you purchase, like, you do a, a purchase for a hundred percent of your KBTs per square foot. And we could put in where it was, you know, you do a five year based on your first, you know, you do five years based on, you know, the model. And then the next years are, are after you have five years of actual use and you purch, you either do onsite or purchase offsite for that. So you're purchasing renewables for all the power and any of the gas energy that you use. So it's, it's a matter of actual, actual projec, and projected energy use that then you're, um, either onsite or offsite renewables purchase.
What is the purpose of doing this? Do they get tax credits or do they get?
No. It's to, so we don't have legacy emissions in, in SIO to help us meet our carbon neutrality goals.
So the government will be monitoring?
No.
That's why, that's my question.
It would be, it would be, uh, yeah, I mean, with the development agreement, could have a reporting, actually.
So that's my question, you wouldn't want to.
Um, we could, we could. If, if we want, all they would have to do is enter, um, their energy data into Energy Star Portfolio Manager and it would, it would monitor it.
Is that how you do it? Is that how you'd monitor it?
We have our internal monitoring system. We have a building management system.
We haven't done it yet. This is the first.
That's why my question is, I'm not getting the answer.
In terms of sharing data, I guess I'd have to defer.
I'm getting the answer, actually.
I mean, I, I, I have to be really honest with you tonight. This is the first time that we're doing this.
Okay.
As a company, we have a lot of energy goals. So one of the things is we've committed to is spending a million dollars a year replacing, um, lighting on dealerships so that all of our dealerships are using LED lighting. So we have a lot of, um, ESG, you know, environmental, um, um, goals.
Right, right.
That's federal law, you'd be, aren't you being forced to do that? No, 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 not at all.
Not at all.
Just the stores are.
So, uh, to cut to the chase, how, how do we get some kind of an outline of how you would monitor? Because great things, carbon neutrality, all good stuff, all good words, verbiage.
I think the easiest thing we could do would be to utilize our BMS to give you a report. You know, just save that data on the metrics and, you know, year over year comparison and see how that's performing.
Well, what SIO is doing, I mean, this is what SIO is doing, is they're using Energy Star Portfolio Manager. It automatically gets all the energy data from DTE and there's a, a report at the end of the year.
You mean SIO government?
Yeah, the SIO government, yep, and for the buildings. And SIO has subscribed to My Green Power, so a hundred percent of our electric is all renewable. So the only thing that, that SIO has to offset, um, and they have until twenty thirty to do that, is their gas use and of their buildings. Then there's the fleets and so forth. But the building carbon neutrality is actually pretty easy, um, with, uh.
So what if they're not in compliance and then what happens?
Well, they would just have, they, it's all about a purchases. They would have to, yeah, they would, I mean, that would be a zoning compliance issue.
Right.
So the, I mean, it would be pretty easy to say, this is our building report and this is what we've contracted for in our renewable energy. It'd be, it'd be pretty simple to do that reporting.
So that's pretty much it?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So it's, and it isn't, it doesn't take a lot of effort to do that.
Okay, so.
Is it that good?
Uh, based on what you described, it looked good.
I can, actually, I can show you SIO's.
Okay, okay, well, no, I didn't.
And that's actually the way most governments are proposing to do it.
The other question I have for you is very good, you talked about in your presentation, what kind of new question will not so important, but still, bike parking, I mean, you will provide bar, bike parking?
We're required to correct.
People who just like to park their bikes.
It's a requirement of your ordinance and at the same time, it's, it fits into what we are trying to create there with EV Park.
What is the relationship between Ashray and LEED? I mean, there's no relationship, but, uh, can there be a correlation?
Um, somewhat, yes, in the way that their goals are aligned. But I would say that those two organizations have, um, different viewpoints.
Uh, right, right, uh, you, you, you talk.
Ashray sets code. LEED is a, a program that people voluntarily buy into to get a certification on their building.
Right, exactly. So if you are conforming to the next level of Ashray, which you said a moment ago, how does that translate into LEED, uh, standards?
I don't think it, I can't see.
Well, they do have a LEED certification for net zero, Rakesh. But just doing, going through LEED certification is about twenty thousand dollars. And.
And a lot of time.
Well, that's why it's about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Following code generally, most, most, you know, LEED is becoming, I hope I don't offend anybody. LEED is becoming a little bit more obsolete in the sense that code is caught up to them and the code requirements generally are putting your building in compliance with LEED. It's just really, does the owner wanna spend the extra capital, the twenty thousand dollars, to get a certificate? It's really, I think, where the industry is at.
I will say that, you know, if, if this does go forward like this, this is way better than LEED. A LEED certificate, a carbon neutrality.
The other thing you can do is you can follow the LEED guidelines as you're designing your buildings, which we often do, but the, it's a rather arduous process to get the certification. And so that's not as important to us as building good quality buildings that, um, support good environmental practices.
And it doesn't, I think, it, um, the new one may, but the carbon emissions are not the primary.
No.
And here, it, I mean, with our carbon neutrality, so the carbon emissions are.
Did I just hear a suggestion that maybe we would want to have them provide a report back to the township on their compliance with that? Or the carbon neutrality, how would we word that?
Yeah.
That could be part of the development.
A development agreement, because it talks about that in the development agreement and that was just, it was just a little weak in its demonstration.
Can I ask a brief question that I'll get rid of this off on this?
Yeah.
Um, I, I was confused a little bit, Mr. Lu, in reading your memo. Now I gotta find out what I had. Um, you talk about the rooftop equipment visibility. Um, were you saying that the plans don't provide for no visibility or were you saying it's a?
Page, okay, you.
Yeah, I don't, that's, I gotta find. Uh, page ten, ground building mounted equipment. You see, all roof mounted equipment is required to be screened in accordance with the section thirty six dash three forty five B ten. Um, sight line diagrams have been provided.
Yes.
Demonstrating roof mounted equipment would not be available along Jackson Road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying it works.
Okay. Move benefits.
Mm-hmm.
I think to kick that off, um, we heard some discussion about, you know, EV parks and is that really a community benefit? First of all, um, I, I felt that when we dealt with the preliminary PUD, that was a major discussion point. And we felt that we, we got there. Um, and even up beyond that, we've, we've ultra enhanced it. We were providing more charging stations. I think when you look at most of this type of infrastructure, the buyback on this, the years are enormous. Or, or you're not, you're not getting any return on your investment. That's why a lot of solar doesn't click.
Selling the charging?
There's a model associated with that, so. I'm just saying that the, the, the return on investment isn't there to justify the, the upfront. I mean, we're, again, we're putting a million dollars into EV Park and, uh, certainly the amount that's, uh, would be charged is going to be, uh, not, you cook those costs over a long period of time. Um, so where we at, uh, EV Park, hours of operation, um, will be within the protocol of the township park sunset, sunrise and sunset. Any hours of operation of the dealership, whichever is more restrictive. EV Park hours of operation are subject to change and as be necessary as a business in the sense that, uh, I think there was a desire on the planning commission's perspective that it be open, uh, for all hours for the charging, uh, just as a gas station or something along those lines would be. Uh, but those are certain things that we wanna, uh, discuss. As far as rates, um, basically, it's gonna be a market rate at the time of activation. Um, we're exploring options with a national vendor about establishing a reduced rate for registered park users that reside within a set radius. So if you punch in your zip code along with your charge card, there might be a reduced rate associated with that. So we're, we're investigating that. And current plan is to verify a park user's zip codes as a determination of, uh, described at reduced rate, which I just reiterated, so. So.
So we view that as all part of the EV, that's one benefit. I get, and, and I, one thing you, I mean, when you said level three, I was very impressed. Most developers that are even on board with EV installation are at level two.
Go back one slide.
One that hold, you think we used the just now of EV's presentation and has warned you that it'll all be a good report. We look at benefits, like contribution to the ladder truck, contribution to our stormwater system and a lot of the upgrades that we have to do, we have homeless upgrades we have to do, um, pathways, um, contribution to a fire department. It's data, we have the new benefits.
Case is looking for a graphic right now and I think this really tells a pretty dramatic story. When you start looking at available charging stations within your community, they're very, very limited. I mean, this is going to be a significant, um, significant benefit in the sense that, uh, it's going to be, um, it's gonna be mapped, it's gonna take users that are now maybe going all the way to Ann Arbor for a charge because you can look at all the charging stations in Ann Arbor. Maybe they wanna stop in SIO Township now and frequent businesses that are in SIO Township while their vehicles are being charged. The walkability of it, you know, being able to set your charge up and then just walk to some of the places that are in close proximity. I think there's a, there's a lot of synergies here that are created as a result of EV Park. I think, uh, Mr. Chang's idea of putting a bus stop, I think this just enhances the whole theme that we have with respect to alternative transportation, uh, you know, non-motorized transportation, all of those types of, um, benefits. It, it really ties everything. It's a, it's a dealership, it's transportation oriented, you know, we've got a park that is centered around transportation alternatives. Um, just, we're really proud of it. So, um, I think, uh, we hope that you concur that that is a significant community benefit, so.
Absolutely. You get no argument by this commissioner, that's one community benefit. Um, and, and I don't mean to disparage it because I, it's like better than anything I've ever seen proposed to us. So I don't wanna diminish all the aspects that you've talked about. Um, but another community, you know, and in my review of my notes, we had a meeting in October, twenty fifth, fifth of twenty twenty one and we talked about community benefits and it, it kinda got left hanging. Mr. Hyde motioned to table and then we tabled it to, um, December twentieth of twenty one and, um, we still didn't flush out community benefits. So I was thinking some of the things, aspects that I looked about, looked at, all electric buildings, I think, is a community benefit. So you got EV park, electric buildings, and, and this is Kim Moore speaking, I'm not trying to speak for everybody on commission. But I think trying to meet that net zero carbon, um, mutual goal is definitely a community benefit. Um, we thought the park was gonna be a community benefit, but that didn't make it, so. Um, and all the tree stuff we've been talking about, I don't view that as a community benefit. That's part of the tree ordinance, so that, that requires ordinance compliance, so. Um, open space can be a community benefit, but the PUD statute, how much open space do you have?
We have thirty seven percent, whereas the ordinance requires thirty.
Thirty five.
So thirty five, I thought.
Thirty, I think.
It's a quarter, oh, okay, so you. Thirty two, I think, actually, but, you know.
So you've got seven, seven percent more.
Okay. All right, well. And then the, uh, uh, stormwater education. Yes.
Storm, stormwater what?
Education.
So what we've, uh, would like to do, no, no. No billboards. No billboards, no, no, no big signs.
I thought a sign or I heard, I heard Joe say something.
No, so.
Big blinking signs, stormwater.
Come here to see the best stormwater in SIO Township.
All right, I missed her again.
So what we have been talking, um, what we have been, um, developing is a way to have a educational walk through our site because there's native plantings, there's the bio swales. So it's a great way for someone, if they chose to road, ride their bike along Jackson Road, you could come in, park at the EV park and then you could walk through the site and it really could be an educational walk through and they would be very small placards. We've talked about different ways to do it, whether you do it with a QR code that you could read about it. Um, I think it would be something we'd like to develop in partnership with your Parks and Pathways Director, Anna Cohn, to make sure that it, it falls in line with what she's been working on as far as initiatives. But, um, we've definitely been working on that piece to make sure that all of this, um, all of the great, um, work we're doing environmentally is able to be shared with the community and it doesn't, people just don't understand, you know, don't look at it and go, oh, well, I don't understand why all those grasses are there or whatever that might be. So that is definitely something that's in development. But again, until we actually get started on the site, that'll be probably one of the, the, the last things that gets implemented into the site.
But could it be made part of the agreement?
Yes, we could make it part of the agreement, that there would be an educational element and. Yeah, and we've been talking about it, exactly.
Learn about the buildings, I mean, carbon neutrality.
Carbon neutrality could be an interesting, yeah.
I think you're resonating with the people that are gonna be in EV Park, like, they wanna see that.
Yeah, um. I'm gonna take a stab at this. Uh, not meant to be offensive, but this is, I think it's, for those in our community that would be interested, I think it'd be a great idea. It's just, um, I'm looking for something more substantive as a community benefit. So I'm not against that, I mean, who would be, who would be against it? I might be one of those that comes and do your, does your tour, but I don't know how many of our community members would. Maybe there's a lot, maybe I'm just ignorant about that.
Maybe your schools would use it, but again, um.
Are your buildings two stories? Refresh my memory.
Um, the BMW building is a, a single story with a mezzanine for the parts department. And then the Mercedes Benz building does have a second story, which is, um, just for, um, what we call in the industry back of house. It's not a customer facing second story. But there is a meeting space up there.
I agree with you, Commissioner Moore. I think, uh, I don't see anybody in our community making use of this park. Um, and I will disagree when you say that EV charging stations is a public benefit. Um, I have a plug-in hybrid, um, so I have to charge it pretty frequently, uh, or else I'll switch over to gas. Um, but I never have an issue finding charging spots in SIO. We have Meyer, uh, I would say most I've ever seen charging in a time is three cars out of, must be at least six spaces or more. And then you have, uh, over in Westgate in Ann Arbor, um, I think I've never seen another car argue they're charging, honestly. So I don't think we're hurting for EV parking. I don't think this is gonna help anything. I don't know that anybody would come to a dealership here in the middle of SIO Township to charge their car and walk on a sidewalk with some, uh, s- some, uh, lush grass. So I, I disagree that that's a community benefit.
Well, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the EV charging, because first of all, these are the fast chargers. These are the chargers that people seek out when they are traveling. We are not that far from, um, I ninety four. There are twelve of these, there will always be them opening. This is a major, if you look at the investment that the, um, state of Michigan is trying to do in get, getting fast charging infrastructure, because SIO, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, you do a great job of biking, but SIO is car dependent and if we don't have a fast charging infrastructure in SIO, um, we will not be able to, uh, we will not encourage or shift that market. Um, you know, it, there are gonna be a lot more people competing with, um, other folks and all of the multifamily who are gonna be the last to get EV charging in their, um, developments will need fast chargers someplace in the community to be able to charge. These will charge, do a full charge, which is defined as eighty percent in thirty minutes of a fully electric car. Um, so it is, we don't have any fast chargers in SIO, we have zero fast chargers in SIO right now. So now whether twelve is the right number or whatever, but it is a significant difference. Um, and I think the most that I've found of the fast chargers, City Hall, Ann Arbor City Hall put in four. Um, but, um, I don't, and there might be, I don't know, even if there's another one.
Are they level three?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's true.
They have the fast, the level three chargers. But I don't know of any other, and those aren't required in any, um, m- most ordinances because they're, they're so expensive and the amount of energy that they take. So there's an advantage of putting them together for getting that power source, um, to that particular location. So there is, it, it is a major piece of infrastructure that there's no way the township could afford it.
Well, I don't, I, I, sorry, I do disagree though that the lack of charging infrastructure is preventing our residents from purchasing EV vehicles. I see, uh, an abundance of very large trucks, uh, everywhere I go in this township and I know they cost just as much or more than a entry level EV. So I don't think this lack of charging facilities is what is driving, uh, vehicle purchases in SIO Township.
I'd probably agree with you, it's not the only thing, that's for sure.
So what I mean, you're saying you can find a charger, use it, Meyer, et cetera, et cetera, that they'll be true. But we are at the beginning of the EV journey and, uh, the demand is exploding exponentially. Uh, so we are, I drive a gas car, I'd drive a gas car still, but, uh, overall, that's not where the market is going. And, uh, twenty thirty five is the cutoff, so for the big three at least. So we are looking at the future right in front of us, which is not too far away at all. So Jan has a point, Commissioner Jan has a point, I mean, uh, we have to look at the future. The future is here and we can't afford it at the township, but somebody else can. Which brings me back to my point and I'm, I may sound crazy, bring this up again and again. How do we decide what goes, what cannot go in the outlaw? Because that perhaps has a relationship, the people who may or may not come for the charging in the near future, because.
I didn't hear you. Why do we say, oh, the outlaw?
Yeah, because if there's a relationship, which I, I believe there is, but maybe there isn't. Uh, but if the industrial lot, uh, I have nothing here for, or a storage facility, then people don't come. I don't want industrial lots to hang around. Uh, but if it's something else, then perhaps people would come.
Well, they'd like you to walk into their dealership and look at the new car, your old one is charging, so, you know.
I mean, I think.
So that's a good question, my wife was asking that question this evening. I was telling her about this project, she said, why would anybody go to dealership to charge a car? I said, but, well, you have to charge a car, so where would you go then?
You go to where the chargers are.
Exactly. So I said, well, there's a place to walk around here, so it appeals to me. In the summer, I would walk, take a brisk walk up and down, I do it everywhere. Whenever I go out to wait supper for my kids, I start walking sidewalk, just my style. But again, I'm the minority, I think, uh, I don't see good in what I do, but.
You can walk over to the, one of the benches and read a, read your phone.
Exactly, I mean, it's not in the American culture to sit at a bench and read newspaper. I mean, so I don't think it's gonna happen here either at the dealership. But hopefully we can drive some behavior, we can also drive some demand. I mean, again, but let's stop with money, what Commissioner Jan said was right. It costs a lot, but there's infrastructure that we have to put.
I had questioned whether it was a public benefit because in my mind, I was picturing this as people thriving on, or, you know, driving on the interstate from Chicago to Foston, halfway there, they need to charge their car. And that's who's gonna benefit from it, not the local residents, but your point. Not the local residents, but your point is that people who don't have the ability to have a charger in their garage, cause they don't have one.
Right.
Um, could spend a half an hour or whatever it takes just to get their car charged every day, or every couple of days.
You could even, you know, answer your emails on the wifi while your car is charging.
For what, for what that's worth, we have level-two chargers at both of our facilities now. And every morning, we see the same cars plugged into the chargers when we come in.
But obviously, there are people who don't have the ability to plug right into the garage, cause they don't have one.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree with Jan and I agree with Commissioner Ratch about this because all along I've been on the commission, we have been asking developers to contribute to this one, to keep EV charging. And as a matter of fact, I was thinking about the dental office, I, I went up there not too long ago to see if they put those guys in, and they sure did. But I don't know, do you know if they're level three?
No.
They're level two, so I wholeheartedly agree. I, or I wholeheartedly believe that the EV park is a community benefit. Um, because it is tied to what we're trying to do as a community, Syo Township, as well as the state um, and, and our country in terms of the infrastructure. So I'm, I'm comfortable with saying the EV are, and they're going well above um, in, in lots of ways that have been detailed in our, both the last two meetings. So um, I think that's a solid EV, um, I'm sorry, community benefit. And I think the electric buildings, I look at that the same way. Um, this is a, a movement to get to net-zero carbon and um, um, we don't have a statute on this right now, it's like we don't have a statute on EVs, and this is a community benefit. I think in a lot of our discussions, we talk about our community wanting to get to net-zero. Um, so the open space, three per, seven percent more open space, okay, I'll go along with you. All right, I give you that, but the education tours, I'm not so uh, uh, swept for. So I would like you to consider those other uh, um, ideas that I threw out there earlier in our meeting. Contribution to our waste or water system, um, contribution to our fire department system, um, to add one more um, community benefit.
And we are open to that, we've been trying to get a meeting set up with your township staff. And we have been unsuccessful, cause we, we don't, we wanna know what is it that we can?
That's certainly not your goal.
If you put in to your proposal that you would like, that, or we added, that you would, that you uh, would contribute to the township funds for whatever, that would be part of the negotiations after approval.
Right, and, and that is, that's our recommendation.
You could, you could say, you know, that the applicant be open to, you know, discussion with township on addition.
Right, and, and we've been trying to get this meeting set up, we really wanted to come here to understand what the needs of the township are and how we could help contribute to them. We probably can't completely fix it, but we could definitely make a contribution um, to that. But we, we can't get a meeting.
We could be working on, trying to imagine to this, where you believe are the public benefits in this current plan. And then also add that you would, you know, if, if the motion was to move this forward in a positive way tonight, but you would also be looking for the applicant to work with, uh, township board um, in the event of having future public benefits that may include fire, utility, um, and that's what I'm thinking. And just leave it open, I think, I think leaving it open like that, at least you mentioned the things that we should quickly bring together of contributions for, um, and I think that would open the door for negotiation. And that's typically where the negotiation actually occurs. Um, but I will say, you know, just, and I always emphasize this is that, that those monetary benefits are supposed to be based on their particular plan. You know, it's like impacts of their plan to Syo Township. You, you never wanna be in a position where it appears that we are taking money for improvement. They, they probably have money for a bad plan. Well, that's not, you know, that's not what we do, or that's not what we're supposed to do. That those public, those monetary fire paths, utilities.
Well, the things that I mentioned fit into that, they're using water, they're using sewage. They're, you know, they quite could possibly use a, a fire truck with a ladder on it.
But I just point that I, 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 you know, I, I was, you guys probably have heard me say this before, but I, I think it's important to note that we're not trading in approval for.
And that's on the record.
Except when it comes to trees.
You wouldn't think so, probably.
Except when it comes to trees, guys. We do trade money for that.
For what?
We'll, we'll take money for a bad plan when it comes to trees.
I appreciate that.
Just gotta keep in perspective. I think some of the other things that we had talked about during the original PUD process, um, I think it resonated with the group is there's range anxiety out there, you know, I, I, I'm one of those guys, I, I've been looking for an electric vehicle. I just can't pull the trigger on it because I, I, I wanna get from here to here and I don't know that I've got a charging station that I'm gonna be able to stop at to be able to, to get there. So I'm kinda waiting for the, the battery development to just get me to that factor of safety, to where I can finally pull the trigger on that. I think that's the importance of this infrastructure, you know, it starts breaking down those types of barriers when it looks like, uh, the gas stations, there's, it's, it's a charger on every, every corner. Like, there's a gas station on every corner, I think you've eliminated the problem with range anxiety, right? So just from my, my perspective, I'll just give you my own personal beliefs on that.
You're in the car business, do you think the battery costs are gonna go down?
I'm not in the car business, I'm in the civil engineering business.
We're in the car business.
We're in the car business, listen. I think, like any technology, as it evolves over time, we'll see a significant improvement in range for cost in that ratio. But I think we're, we're quite a ways away from that.
Well, I just heard that there's a thousand reg, a mile range area, but I was talking about the cost to replace your battery, which is around fourteen grand right now.
That all depends on how it's manufactured, because there are companies that manufacture modules within the pack. You can replace one specific module if it goes bad, it's isolated. And there are others that just make this giant battery pack that you have to buy, take a whole thing. So it all depends on how it's manufactured and by whom. So, quick example, BMW came out with the ICE three in twenty fourteen. The small little, looks like a little box, right? And that had about a sixty-mile range, and then they came out with a range extender, made it to a hundred and forty. That car had six individual modules within that battery pack. So if a module went bad, you lower the whole pack, take out the battery, replace that piece, it was a couple thousand instead of twenty. I don't know how many other cars do that, the newer ones with the bigger packs.
I mean, I'm a person that keeps the car over ten years.
Sure.
So, uh, a person that leases all the time, it's no big deal, buy a new car every five years.
So did, I just wanna kind of, um, bring this back together and, um, did people get their questions answered and?
I think we touched on what we would want for the outlet and what we would not want for, but we didn't. Do we, do we have a full discussion? I mean, is what?
Uh, do we wanna word that in a, in a way where, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if we want it to be, you know, an active synergistic commercial or, or residential use.
Um, well, I presume that the bo, the, the board trustees, they helped to, um, they talked about the outlets and helped to generate this language. I mean, are we gonna, so anyway, they generated language that said general commer, limited to general commercial, high-density residential, intensive commercial, office, office research and light industrial uses, but shall not include any automobile dealer, vehicular dealership or mini-storage uses. So this, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of protocol. No, 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 this was based upon what the board.
Yeah, it was based on your comments from when we met with you in December.
The planning commission comments or the board of trustees comments?
Both.
Both.
Okay. Cause I was just thinking, I thought they were the board of trustees comments, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Cause I don't know in terms of protocol, do we go back and we say, no, we want it limited this way?
I mean, if we wanted it to be more limited, we could recommend, make that in our recommendations.
They will decide, but we, anything that we feel is reasonable.
And I think part of that is the, would you think the uses in light industrial, do we need to have light industrial in there? Yeah, I think we can strike like industrial, light industrial, all the other ones sounded fine.
Residential.
The high-density residential.
Residential.
But I didn't see it in any list of any potential.
Yeah, but it's not, to be really honest, we have been talking to developers and the challenge is the power lines. That are right behind it, those power lines.
Yeah, so for a, for a um, multifamily type of residential development, that is not desirable to have, and we've talked to several um, residential developers and we did not get positive feedback on that because of that issue.
It's, it's good for EV.
You know, I, I'm just, one other thing on page three of Mr. Wu Lan's memo, you see how much I read your memo, Mr. Wu Lan.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. She has the red letter to that issue. Uh, changes from preliminary PUD. So he outlines that, this is slightly modified from the preliminary PUD plan. In number one, uh, two dealerships, a third dealership is for future. Two, BMW has swapped location, I'm not sure we care so much about that, but three, the previous pavement previously proposed, we talked about that. And then four, the minor modifications to parking and landscape areas within the adjacent, within and adjacent to Jackson Road, regional area. So I guess we've talked about all those.
Do we actually address number four with what we've updated um, on the landscape plan that we've shown you tonight?
So I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Chen, I don't have a problem with the changing the location of the landscape stuff. My biggies are community benefits and, um, and uh, concerned about the mixed-use outlet. Um, and the sign. No, I just do not wanna be in front of another person coming to me and detailing for me how, all the ways that we went against the ordinance, meaning planning commission. Um, and so we should do it one more time. And uh, I remember that meeting so very vividly, so, um. But I, I would just wanna say, I, I for one really appreciate the work that you've done on EV Park um, and the electric electrification of the buildings. I mean, you are like head, you're just so above so many developers that we deal with. Um, and we're trying to, um, I mean, one, we need to change our ordinance, but we're trying to get into this conversation with so many developers and, um, um, the level of knowledge and up-to-date knowledge is slowly happening with developers and engineers. Um, and so it's just refreshing to, to hear about your presentation and what you're doing, so, I mean, it's great, great stuff. Appreciate it, thank you. Despite the fact that I didn't want a dealership there. I gotta give due.
So, um, I'm, I'm sensing that we have, um, a couple folks that, um, will not support it. Or that's what I'm getting. Um, so I'm, what I'm trying to do is, is kind of feel out where the, um, where the, uh, motion should be, do you wanna?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm not opposed, I for one, I'm not opposed to multiple signs as proposed because of how spread out this is. If we are sign after sign right next to each other, that would be one thing. But, uh, I, I think the location of this is quite different from others that we had a problem with. So I'm, I don't, I'm not opposed to that myself. But I haven't heard whether anybody wanted to eliminate that.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I.
Positive, from, from a proposal to recommend approval, removing that, I don't, I don't know where we stand on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm more, I would be in favor of doing the four with a, a limit of, 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 with a height in area limit of something like a four foot and, um, forty-eight or something.
If that gets the, the proposal voted down, uh, because it involves something so.
I think, I think we need to see where we are with the sign piece, yeah.
It might be a bit of small thing down there.
You, you would.
Can I ask, can I, Mr. Wu Lan, so, I'm gonna assume that, does each building get probably the maximum amount of wall signage, so say, two hundred square feet per building? Is that in the ballpark?
Based on the frontage.
So, so if these were.
So, it's based on the frontage of the building?
Yeah, these are standalone buildings, they get two square feet of signage for each one linear foot of building frontage that faces one public road. And then that's the maximum signage they get for building and grounds, they can divide that between building and ground sign. And then there's maximum signage, I think it's a, I forget what the maxims are, but, but it's, it's, uh, you get to divide your total, so whatever your frontage is facing Jackson, I don't know how wide these buildings are, you multiply that by two, and you get to divide that by your ground sign, pole sign. And there's maximum, I can tell you that.
Yes.
Is that, you hear if they were separate built, separate?
That's if they're separate buildings on separate lots, yes.
So we could do, we could still meet the intent of the ordinance by doing that.
We're gonna meet the intent.
So there would be no monument, there would be no, the, and is it the PUDs that get the big? Where does the big sign come in?
The woods.
The, no, the, like the pylon signs that, yeah, they're limited to fifteen feet.
Uh, there's not many that do like, um, business centers there.
Business, business center sign, so we would, wouldn't have this have any business center sign? It would only have what would be allocated to each building, um, for a monument sign and, and their building sign with the monument sign not being, well, the, I mean, I would wanna height on it.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm not exactly sure what the cyber code is for signs.
So it's, so the max, so the max depending on, again, you get two square feet for each one linear foot of frontage. No more than two hundred square feet wall signage and two or three standing signage, let's get a hundred, it's like. So, that goes with the max, but they, it, it usually goes from. How, how, what's the width of the, just typical, what's one of the widths, one of these things that faces Jackson?
Or the full length divided by four, we could do that.
Yeah, I, I know that for the BMW property, looking at the ordinance. When we put the signage on the building, we were limited to a fifteen-foot and it's a smaller kind of pylon sign, for BMW, it just has some flags on it. Um, and at Mercedes-Benz, um, Mercedes actually wanted a larger star emblem on the front of the building and we did have to shrink that down in order to meet the, the requirements of the township.
I do have those signs, they should have been in, um, in your packet. If you wanna see the designs, it's on SP one point three and one point four. I, I, they should, it was final PUD resubmission by twelve.
Each building is getting the two, up to the two hundred square feet, or you're saying you're dividing all four of them by that, so they're each gonna get fifty square feet of sign? Each building is getting the two, up to the two hundred square feet, or you're saying you're dividing all four of them by that, so they're each gonna get fifty square feet of signage?
Mercedes were separate lots.
But they're not separate lots.
Right, but he said if they were, this is what it would be, now you can ask a different one. So he answered your question, you're different than we asked.
What are you showing me?
The signs, everybody.
It's information to me because it says if these had been devised out, which the PUD can't do, or at least, I guess they could.
This is what this.
Jesus, gotta put that on the table.
So BMW had three signs, a pylon sign, a wall mounted sign, and a two wall mounted building signs? It has a service sign over the service drive, and then it has the, the BMW Van Arber name over the showroom portion, and then that's the pylon sign um, that's depicted on the plan.
It's on the video screen, for those who are trying to see it on a plan.
So your proposed pylon sign for BMW is twelve foot tall, is that what you're saying? And Mercedes is thirty, no?
Eleven, it's twelve essentially.
Well, but they're also very narrow.
Do you wanna give it visible, and if you put all that screening up front?
So, and then that's an example of a monument sign?
Yeah, the pylon.
Just call some ground signs, freestanding ground sign.
And there would be.
So the building signs, are they allowed to have two?
Yeah, you, you just, you just can't cover the total square footage.
A total square footage, you can divide that.
You can break them up on every lot, if it was a separate.
Is it the PUD requirement?
No, no, in, in any sign ordinance requirement, for, she has asked, can you have more than one wall?
And what's the, the square?
You can have multiple wall signs.
And for the, in the PUD ordinance, when they have two, what's, is the total square footage, what is that based on?
It's not, it has nothing to do with PUD, it has to do with a um, it's a considering business center.
So, so really what we're saying is that they wouldn't have business, they're allowed two business center signs in one parcel, but what we would be saying is they wouldn't have any, any business center signs, or they would be having a pylon, a pylon, and equivalent to what a, an individual building would be.
Yeah, so the, our, our ordinance ref, did reference that kind of building, business center standard. Cause you, in a business center, you can have up to two business center signs, if you have more than four hundred feet of frontage.
So in lieu of doing the business center signs, they can do standalone uh, building or business signage if they were separate property.
Yeah, so this, so what I told you before is if they were on separate lots, or so two square foot for each one linear, one linear for frontage that faces a public road, if we're considering this a business center sign, which our work, which our review did, then it's um, two, two sign, two freestanding signs, if you had more than four hundred, four hundred fifty feet of frontage. And then the wall signs in a business center are actually one per one, so one linear foot for each, one, one square foot for each one linear foot of building frontage that faces one block street. It's a little different calculation if it's considered a business center or standalone business.
So when I drive past the auto mall, I don't look at the monument sign. I see the signs on the buildings, I mean, that catches my eye because I'm dealing with a lot of traffic on Jackson Road. And I dare say, my feeling is that monument sign is not as important as those signs on the buildings. You could, you know, cause I can't stop to go, oh, is that, now let me see, is, is Mercedes in there from that monument sign, even though it's large? It takes some attention because there's a lot of it stacked.
The sign that takes your eye to the building or when you're looking at the building, catch the sign that.
Yes.
That's the kind of thing.
For the UBS drunk.
What are the setbacks build down on these, these standalone signs in my new center, aren't they, if it's a thirteen foot tall sign, setback thirteen feet from the property line?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet.
How could you forget?
So, I'm, I'm thinking study Van Arber, how they do it by one to one, but do we know where these signs are gonna be located on this, this layout? Is, oh, is it, okay, so nice to see.
So we model the sign the way it looks, size, width, the materials.
And, and the, the proposed trees will not be blocking that sign then?
Be there to block everything.
Trees are gonna eventually grow up, you'll never see the sign, but unfortunately for us, the manufacturers require this signage, and so when we can't get this signage, we would have to go back and ask for variance, but it's a requirement from the manufacturer for the signage.
When you say that, the dealerships?
At the dealerships, yes, so Mercedes Benz requires this signage. So what we did is, we go through this, your, your signage code and we have them depict signage that's gonna meet the code. So we've, we've worked with many, with Mercedes Benz and BMW to say, this is what SiO Township allows. Give us a, present us with a signage package that would meet those requirements.
Or in this case, they picked it for those standalone.
So, would you be willing to, so, so you're considering that a monument sign?
Well, in, yes, in our vernacular, we call it a pylon sign because it's a little bit taller, but.
We gotta go with our vernacular because they.
Okay, so yes, we would call that a monument sign.
Okay.
Then what ours, ours is.
Freestanding, call freestanding.
What, what, what is the total frontage on Jackson Road of the whole parcel?
They're not the same.
I just wanna get the scale.
We just talk, we, we just.
Our monument sign is different from what they're showing right now.
Well, the business center signs, the heat, it was reviewed as a single parcel which is allowed to have no more than two business center signs. And the business center signs are those.
Fifteen foot.
Foot, fifteen foot by, how much, how, they can be just.
Multiple business name.
Right, yes, exactly.
Right, and so they're asking to do what, it, to consider it for, as individual part of buildings with, with their freestanding signs, which.
Like the one you showed.
You know what?
Like the one they showed just now, so that's my question. We have those signs, uh, our monument sites, whatever they're called, multiple business names, and versus this one. First, the question number one, are we going out of, like, uh, conformity or the uniformity between the dealerships? Is there an issue with that?
Yeah.
Kind of different, you know?
It's an issue with our sign ordinance.
Okay, so, 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 so that's an issue.
Yeah, and let me, let me, to, to, kinda to that point, what we're talking about, so a business center sign, the definition is, is, is it supposed to have the name of the business center
Yeah.
and three major tenants.
Right.
And so if this was a, we call, you know, we call the other one the Ann Arbor Auto Mall, I don't know what they call this, we call this the Dexter Auto Mall, I'm not sure, whatever we call this one.
The lithium mall.
The lithium mall, you know, or, or car park mall. And then, and then there would be three.
Feet.
There would be, and it works, cause there's three dealerships here, so there'd be three spaces for, and then they have two of them, so they have one near the east, or one near the east and one near the west, to have that overall site, all three dealerships could have their plates on that sign, and then they would call it, you know, auto department.
Right.
And all. And that, and that is what, that is what the ordinance right now calls for.
And the zoning board of appeals has allowed them to do four businesses as opposed to
Somebody have to.
labeling it a, a business park or something, some name, so they interpreted it as four pieces of content as opposed to having to have a business park name and three tenants.
Yeah, I'm not getting hung up on that, so it would be whether it's a business park or auto mall, I'm not, I'm dying, I just, I just wanna kinda throw, I don't wanna like muddy up the waters anymore than it needs to be. There's a monument sign, a pile sign, or a freestanding sign, and it's all one thing. And we only, we require there only be two of those on the site.
On, on a, for a business center, yes, business center sign.
Does the ordinance say business center?
Yes, the PUD ordinance does.
All right.
Sign ordinance.
Sign.
So I, I need to add this question, and uh, so thanks for explaining what you said of the, one on the east side, one on the west side, it'll have three businesses names, end of story, clear, it's very simple. In addition to that, can they put their so-called pylon or whatever that Mercedes sign in, 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 within the lot just to give customers driving in?
Not without a waiver.
Okay.
Under the current ordinance, no.
You know, but how do we get around that?
There are provisions for direct, for directional signs. And direct directional signs are relatively small, and they can't have a logo on them, so you could have small directional signs at each entry point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
I was just gonna say, that's the main dollar question, how we get around it, you just said. I would say we don't get around our ordinance. That's what I was saying earlier in the meeting, is that's gotten us into trouble, getting by, so, I mean, that's just a point of view.
No, good point of view, good point of view.
And what is the total um, length along Jackson?
Four hundred feet.
Twelve hundred feet, okay.
For which worth, the signs are about four hundred fifty feet apart.
I don't wanna like, I don't wanna damage your deal with the dealership.
No, I, I think we're sharing what your thought process is, and I'm just, I'm wondering if there's something here that we can hang our hat on. You know, whether this is, cause we talked about the idea of potentially creating three separate tax IDs just for, from an overall management perspective, I don't know if we're beyond being able to do that, Doug, but that was something we talked about. And then the second thing, which I thought you guys felt was more appropriate, was condominium, you know, if, if we create three separate condominium units and they're, they're three separate tax IDs, why does that?
For that.
Four, sorry, thank you, thank you. So you create four separate tax IDs as a part of that condominium, why does that not fall into a category of having one sign per unit?
Okay, and treats it separately.
Right.
And so what we're, some of us are considering is allowing that requirement to be met in lieu of.
The business center sign.
The business center concept.
But you, you can't just say, well, the, the sign ordinance doesn't exist.
Pardon me?
No, but what we're saying is, we have, we have two different, there are two ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, one would permit a um, a building sign for each individual building, were they separate.
Were they separate?
Were, were they separate lots?
Were they separate parcels, okay, so.
Separate parcels, yes.
If they were separate parcels. And in this case, a, a lot, many PUDs have buildings, y, y, you know, I don't wanna say strip mall, but, but they tend to be one, they have shared buildings. And so the idea, they can't be separate, and.
So we have a PUD in existence right now, that has a restaurant on it, it's a little, like a little strip of other stores, and then a defunct theater, alright? And under that PUD, applying our ordinance, sign ordinance, we have determined that other shop owners can't have sign, because only two signs can be in there.
Cause they can't separate that one building into multiple lots. In this case, there's.
Actually, they, they, there are three, three lots in that PUD condominium.
And each of those buildings though had, there were three monument signs in that, there were just two, there were just two?
No, there is, there is.
Cause Carlisle has one.
That, that came after.
After, oh.
When, when that, so when that, when the quality, you know, kinda going to block that. When quality sixteen was developed, there was desire by the township to limit signage. And so they, they, they were gonna allow the singles business center sign with absolute development. And then what turned out is quality sixteen, that mountain directional sign.
Yeah.
The, the only, the only, the only freestanding sign is this odd little, said quality sixteen. They could have had a bigger one, but they didn't put that up, and so then.
So can I stop you right there, but when this agreement, we agreed to allow this to happen, we had the signage ordinance at that time, for lots of two?
I don't, I don't remember, that was a while ago, that sign ordinance may have changed.
So I guess it's, it's, it's really.
So, we're, we're, let me read the definition of business center. So a business center is a group of two or more stores, offices, research, or manufacturing facilities which collectively have a name different than the name of any of the individual establishments and which have a common off street or individual. So do you have, that what we're talking about? I don't know if there's a separate name, or you have a name for the whole.
That's just a matter of procedure, what's the name for it?
No, we can't play.
Yeah, now, now let me help, hold your, hold, hold it up, maybe go up to, uh, sign right, and. So, the sign right, so then it goes on to say, so let's look at the business center sign relations. So this is who has become. Okay, so if we look at just a single, the signs permitted for a single business, this is, this is what it says for signs permitted for a single business. Signs permitted for a single, for single buildings on developed lots or group of lots developed as one lot, not in a business center, subject to subsection two of the section. So if they were to condoize this into three different lots, or, or, three or four, that certainly could be, be considered a group of lots developed as one lot. So maybe we are just talking about individual signs on individual lots. But the problem is, we didn't, we have kind of thought they might be condoizing it, or we didn't really know. So I'm kinda freestyling here a little bit because of, of how, what their ownership may or may not be. If they were to condoize these lots, then I think there's an argument to say that each lot would get the required amount of signage.
That they've asked.
So we could contingent, we could make the um, the approval of their sign request contingent on
Condoize.
Of condoizing the.
But if they were to condoize it, and this is a business center, then.
Does that help you?
And I was taking it one step further and saying if we allowed it as though it were, because this could have been, what they've asked for would be perfectly acceptable by that standard. I wouldn't even require them to condoize it because the PUD gives us an advantage.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, rather than throw out this whole process.
Well, no, it'd still be a PUD, you just do a condo within the PUD.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I thought, I.
That's how quality sixteen is.
I thought condos.
Okay, I thought you were saying we have more flexibility in PUDs.
Yep.
Don't, don't take it out, we're not saying the PUD.
Are you saying that subsection two applies?
I'm already saturated.
Subsection two of what?
Of uh, thirty six, three seventy one. I wonder what you were just reading.
But that, that's what my initial review, yes, was initial review, was referencing that.
Those only apply to shopping centers, office parks, industrial parks, or other integrated group of stores. If you read further into the freestanding signs, it says that you can list the businesses on each. If you read further into the freestanding signs, it says that you can list the businesses on each business center sign.
Yeah, that's what I missed, that's what I
Well, but the, these are not business centers, they're just individual.
Well, we don't know, it's not, why isn't it a business center? It's under common ownership in one lot, cause three buildings on a single lot with a common ownership.
Well, then that would just give them one sign, that would list the three
Well, it would give them, it would give them two, because they have a four hundred and fifty feet front.
Who's the fourth building, Jan?
That's how we did it.
What's the fourth building?
The outlet.
It's the outlet that isn't there, it don't
The active synergistic commercial or high-density multifamily project.
We don't know anything about yet.
But that was separated out, but okay.
No, it's
No, it's
It's, it's part of this, or it's not a mixed use.
I see.
And it isn't known what it is, but it's, it's limited to its certain things. So that's where I
I, I mean, I, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is figure out what the motion is gonna contain or not contain, so it's
I'm uncomfortable with these contortions.
The sign.
The sign contortions, that, I, I Feel that, um, we are, well, I feel like we're trying to work with suburban Lithia, I think, you know, which is a good thing. We're trying to figure out how we can accommodate them in the sign thing, and that's a good thing. But I'm uncomfortable about carving out another exception that's not in the statute. And now we're talking about how we're, which statute are we gonna use, and we, we denied the other sign request, because they were part of an existing building, and so this is different, cause the buildings are separate, um, is it a, is it a business center, isn't it a business center? I'm just unco, I mean, clearly our ordinance is not written well. It left us in this uncomfortable position of trying to work with Lithia folks, and to, you know, try to meet them in their needs, and I'm, I, I'm not opposed to that, but I, I just, there was a problem with not, with the ordinance.
Well, I would, I would say that, I mean, just from the reading of the ordinance, there are two sign ordinances. One is a business center, and you can comply with the business center, and there's also the, it, the, the individual building, and you could comply with that, it's what does this particular project, it was reviewed as a business center, but our planner just, our planner just said, well, you could also look at it this way. And so the only reason why we're, we're, um, you know, if the review had been written differently, it
Do we comply?
Yeah, we clearly knew from the onset that this was a site condo. We probably would've written this part of the, part of the review differently.
Well, I'm only just one person, so.
The one vote, where are you on the sign?
I'm still a little uncomfortable, um, I think I'm with Commissioner Moore, it, it's, it's just, which is it? I, I'd like to know more information, which, which, which is this gonna fall under? When we say it's going to be individual condoise, or is it going to be, you know, a, a business center? It actually doesn't mean either. Well, I want it to be code, I'm not, I'm really not in favor of any type of variance or special exception to what the sign code allows. And if it, if we're interpreting that they can have three, then I'm, and I'm okay with it. If we're saying, no, you're allowed to have two, and maybe it is taller, maybe it's a business center, but that's what's allowed under code. I'm, I, I, I'm inclined to stick with what's allowed in the sign code. And just as a side note, it's my experience, I think it was mentioned to somebody with, you know, the trees aren't gonna block this sign. Please don't cut down the trees or prune the, the canopies of the trees, it happens all over, that, you know, I'll go on record, you know, the, the trees somehow mysteriously die or It's very common.
Replace it, it is a required tree.
Once a neighbor or somebody complains about it, but it's not uncommon, that they're cutting them down so you can see the wall sign or the pylon sign, so you know, I've seen it happen, just going on record, and hopefully, you know, the trees aren't impacted for the sake of the sign.
What about, I mean, the interpretation that I'm getting from our planner is that if it's condoised, it would fall in the ordinance under this. If it's a, um, if it's not, and it's one parcel, it would fall under the business center sign.
Yeah, if we worded in that way that it is following the sign ordinance, whether they're condoizing it or doing it as a business center, it's meeting sign code then, I would be okay with that, but it's gotta meet sign code, or they're coming in with the application.
We, we are comfortable with committing that this is gonna become a condo.
It'll be condo.
Just so you're aware. Hopefully that clears up.
Alright. Alright. Alright, and then we have our list of, um, um, a list of, of community benefits, that the planning division is, um, would be the, um, twelve fast charging, EV charging, um, and park, the, um
So you're saying you want to list all of them?
Well, yeah.
EV park, the electric buildings.
Yeah, the all electric, it's a, I'm at the electric. And, uh, the net zero carbon, um, commitment through, eh, you know, annual reporting.
Oh, annual report?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
And you can toss in the seven percent open space, it isn't, it's above the requirement, and the, um, native plantings.
Isn't that a part of our, our ordinance?
Nope.
Nope.
And, uh, uh, stormwater.
Well, Commissioner Moore is kind of partly right. On a PUD, when completed, the PUD shall have significant areas, but not, not less than thirty percent of the total land area devoted to open space, which shall remain in a natural state, and or be restricted for use for active and or passive outdoor recreational purposes, and I like to come into that too. The priority shall be on preserving the most important natural features on the site, as identified by side of that.
So they've got seven percent above that, is what it said.
Open space.
Yeah.
And native plantings, you're saying is a community benefit?
I don't have the
And then the, then the, um, also the
Educational tours?
Well, the, the stormwater is
Stormwater?
The, the stormwater, it, it's low-impact development, stormwater is above and beyond what's required for, um, a stormwater. It's even above our best management practices as listed, the type of stormwater management they're doing. We could combine those and say native planting and, and low-impact stormwater system.
I can't, for some reason, I'm fighting your orders.
Yeah, the, well, it's a whole, yeah, it's
And then, um, we're gonna have contingent on donations to the fire or the sewage water.
Yeah, contingent on, uh, further discussions with township officials on
Yeah, that one, but I know it's in here, yeah, it's like half, where's the number then?
They wanna go home. Here you go. Anything else you want?
Anything to help it move along, I say.
I've only seen level two that fire. They did put one in.
Just provided the existing level target, they just chose a level three target.
Oh, at Myers.
Yeah, and another one. It looks to be in our
Yeah, there's, there, there are four at, um, downtown.
Something like way past, uh, Park Plaza, I don't know what that is.
There's a Toyota one. I don't think it's
The Chevy, the Chevy dealership has
It has a few chargers too. You can look at the, um, if you go on our website, you can see the, the kilowatt charging, and up to fifty, I think, is level two, and then above that, kilowatt hours are the level three, I forget what they are, a hundred and something.
Oh, you know what we didn't discuss?
Uh-oh.
Had too many pieces of paper. It's Mr. Lawrence, I'm holding it, oh. Whatever I did with that. About the lighting.
Handle?
Yeah, David, I think with the last submission, they, they updated that, so it was no longer
There's so many problems.
Yeah, going over the property line or
About the, uh, the height, the tall lighting, and the spillage of the light from the tall lighting?
Yeah, they simply have to meet that, there's no
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's simply
Alright, I'm perfectly willing to move on.
And it's done a block?
No.
Yes, I totally get it.
Yeah, sure, please.
Okay.
So let me do a wrap-up.
Alright.
I can, I can start this, but I think that when we walk through the list of other things that we're wanting to know, we'll need collaboration.
Okay.
You're going off of the model motion, uh, there's a, the reference is section thirty-six, two forty-nine D. So that's not, my, based on my understanding of the, uh, ordinance, that's not what, we're, that's not the section that's applicable here, it's section thirty-six, two forty-nine I.
While you're formulating your motion, I'll check.
You're saying two forty, thirty-six dash two forty-five?
Forty-nine, the next one. Yeah, D is for the preliminary, I is for the, uh, the final PUD.
So the second one, right? Okay, thirty-six, two forty-nine D.
So it should be I.
I, I, okay.
So I'm prepared to begin the motion. It's for suburban Lithia Dealerships PUD, oh eight, twenty-three, zero, zero, one. Based on the information received from the applicant in reflection minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the suburban Lithia Dealerships PUD plan received by the township meets the qualifications for consideration as a PUD, as outlined in section thirty-six, two forty-five C of the zoning ordinance. Based on the information received by the applicant, and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the suburban Lithia Dealerships PUD plan received by the township on Sorry, well, I'll just straight on, D. Received by the township meets the findings pursuant to section two thirty-six, to section thirty-six, dash, two forty-nine I of the zoning ordinance, and recommends approval to the township board for actions on the preliminary plan.
It should be final plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
PUD, final site plan.
Making this determination, the following additional considerations should apply. Considered in order of the planners' review, the engineers' review, that they submit a net zero carbon neutrality report annually to the township, that, that they work with the township parks, well, I'll just say, you know, parks and pathways. Um, what is her title, what is Anna's title?
PPP, she director, oh, just why don't we say PPP?
Okay, uh, for an educational uh, I don't wanna just say why.
Tour?
No, um
Educational content, yeah, for the EV and stormwater park.
Okay, that they consider additions to the township fire or utility or PPP funds as a public benefit. In addition to the public benefits, do we wanna list them all?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
See, this is where you were coming up with what they already had, and I don't know that we need to list what they already have, because that's part of their
I, it hel, it's helpful for the
No, 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 our list is, is bigger than that.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'll be glad to, I, I think we need to be collaborative here, don't say no, 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 say, and
So, and, so well, instead of singling out the donation, with community benefits, including donations to the fire or water, uh, systems
That's why I'm calling you two.
Um, and I have a here
It's fire utilities
EV park
Or pathways.
Yeah.
EV park.
You mean, there are, there are proposing
Well, I want the, I want the board of trustees to understand what we've identified as community benefits. You're just making statements about each thing, so
Yeah, I was making, uh, that they
So carbon neutral report, work with, uh, PPP for educational content regarding EV, stormwater, donations to fire water systems, EV park. All these are community benefits, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, EV park, electric buildings, open space, seven percent more, thirty-five, seven percent, as opposed to just thirty percent. Native plantings, plantings, and stormwater plant, low-impact system.
Thank you. This is where I needed the collaboration, where I set it up, right? I didn't know how we're gonna word that.
I think we need a preamble to that, um, and I think we should know that the community, just after the concerns for the engineers' review, community benefits include
Then it's that list that we just
That list.
Starting with the net zero report, and then
In, include
Stepping through all those others.
But aren't limited to, in case something
And there's one more that I'm gonna throw out here, and that is that they consider, that a consideration be for a bus stop, um, which they seem willing to incorporate upfront, in, in, sort of desired by the township. And then this steps out of community benefits, so if you're gonna be under that list, I'm gonna say that, that they, uh, revise the plan to, that their plan would be revised to be, I don't know how to say it, condominiumized, but that's not it.
That they're, why don't we say that the, that we approve their sign, their signage proposal based on, um, the PUD being a condo?
Becoming
Becoming a condo.
Becoming a condo. And I'm not assuming there's any reason What was it, what was on there?
Um, this is outside of the, uh, um, community benefits. Uh, we would approve their request for waivers on the Delhi side. Waivers for the location of trees and shrubs, to be located on different areas of the site.
I think Doug said that that wouldn't have to be a waiver, that that's
But, that's fine.
We could, or we could just say the plantings as, as shown on the
Well, it, well, it is
Except the, cause it's not a, it's a waiver of location, right?
Right, but I think it does have to be decided, because, you know, the green belt act, uh, ordinance requires that stuff.
I, I think that's good, that's good. And everybody's clear.
Yeah, of, of a waiver of location for Delhi green belt plantings, shrubs.
Not the green belt, it's the perimeter parking lot.
The perimeter parking lot. Delhi perimeter parking lot. Plantings, thank you.
Isn't that the same as the, the Delhi green?
No, they're separate. The green belt is required
So that's a separate waiver they're requesting?
No, that's, they've, that's what they were No, that's they, that's what they were explaining, they they did those, they planted those and then. In addition to that are this are the perimeter plantings for a parking lot. And it's the parking lot plantings that they moved. The perimeter parking lot plantings that they moved.
Perimeter parking.
Parking lot.
I would. Along with all that, the others.
Is there support? We have support for that motion?
No.
It's a vote by. We'll have a roll call vote. Oh, any further discussion, sorry.
I will be not voting for this motion because I'm not in agreement about the signage language. I don't feel comfortable, um, I I think I barely understand your explanation about it. Um, that the requiring it's a condo, it's okay and all that, so I just wanted to see why. I wanted to say why, because I've had board of trustees contacting me, asking why I voted a certain way, so I want to put it on the record.
Well, I guess the other thing is we wouldn't have to put it in there and it would be up to.
Yeah, just mean to say it has to be ordinance.
Well, it's to meet ordinance standards. I think you ought to state it in addition for for.
Why don't we just say the signage shall meet ordinance standards?
Shall be what?
Shall meet ordinance standards. And it depends on how they do they submit it. We're not providing any.
And you understand how you need to submit it.
Any waiver.
Do you want to put a? So did you catch that requirement about the kind of businesses that will not be allowed?
Oh, in the and that they, oh, yeah.
We're talking about it again and.
And I didn't catch any, there was one, you're right, it was a lighting.
We wanted to eliminate light industrial from their list in the development agreement.
Storage. Storage.
That was already a a non. That was already non, so it's from the list that's in the, okay, eliminate light industrial from.
Okay.
From outlet.
Outlet.
Use.
Use, right.
Permitted use.
Yeah, permitted use.
So now we are going.
Is there anything else we want to not be considered?
Oh, well, we already in the develop draft development.
Okay, I haven't seen that, so.
From draft.
Okay. Yeah.
So I'm gonna say eliminate light industrial from at no, at no. Outlet.
Outlet.
Permitted use from uses listed in draft development agreements.
Okay.
So Chris, can you read that, what it says about the signage?
I put down. Well, I had revised plan, revised the plan to become a condo to meet signage code.
Now we're not gonna do that.
Sure.
We're just gonna say.
Can you tell them how to submit it, we're just gonna say they gotta meet the sign order.
Signage shall shall meet sign ordinance.
I wondered how how it got recorded, so I.
Yeah.
Signage. There are no. Sign.
I'm not, I'm not voting for that.
You're not voting for that because of that, even though we're.
I think we spent at least thirty-five minutes discussing this sign issue and we're just and we're just gonna tell the VOT, it's gotta be. So so we say, oh, it's gonna just gotta be employed in code and we explain nothing about our concerns. Of course, the community benefits, that's for sure.
But we, but if it needs the sign ordinance, that's what we're saying it has to be.
You just require it to meet it, no, no.
And which sign ordinance are we asking that they meet?
Uh, the sign ordinance, there.
Well, there's, I've been told there's two.
There's port two different versions within it, two different application sections.
Oh, so they can apply to be a business center or they can apply to be a condo?
We evaluated it as a.
This way we apply, we have to follow your signage ordinance. So we understand that if we're, if we're, if we say we're a business center, we get two signs for the entire development. If we go con, if we go the condo formation, we understand that each business could have a sign, but it must meet your signage requirements. And that's what we're, that you're you're saying. We don't care which way you go, but you gotta follow the rules. And you can't come back and ask for a variance, so we now now have to go back and figure out how to make all those pieces fit. In what we wanna do and we already know, you've already said, there's no variances, you have to follow the ordinance. Does that work for you?
No, we're not doing that, Kim.
We're wording it, no, I think we can, it's because that makes the most sense.
All right, and they worded it, we don't have a way to come back, we have to follow the ordinance.
You do. Well, I mean, what's your concern, I guess? Okay, I mean.
My concern is that it's, uh, ten twenty-two. And I'm into the weeds, which I'm used to being as a lawyer, into the weeds, but, um.
I.
I'm so.
With meeting the ordinance.
With the ordinance, yeah.
With leaving it up to our planner?
Well, we, yeah, leaving it up to our planner, yeah.
Are 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 zoning ordinance administrator?
To the planner, wow.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of time to afford, but.
That's true.
But they're going to have to show which which direction they want to go. And and if they clearly show that, then I will, if they clearly showed that in the last review, then. We will find we need to be having this.
Call questions.
All right, yes.
All right, roll call vote.
All right, Commissioner Sharla.
Yes.
Commissioner Human.
No.
Commissioner Chang, no. Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
No.
And Commissioner Culverton.
Yes.
All right, is that three, three?
One, two, three. So that isn't a recommendation, so.
Yeah, I can go on to township board, this three, three vote.
I thought we can't, cause it's not a recommendation. We have to have something that passes.
No, or fails.
Or fails.
It fails bec- wait a minute, it fails because it did, because we have a, we don't have a majority vote, so it does fail.
Because we don't have.
But with then, we don't have a recor- this motion failed, okay, we don't have a recommendation.
We haven't recommended to.
Okay, well, this is what happened before, we have to have a majority recommendation that goes to the township board.
I hate to even consider this, but do we table this until Commissioner Riser comes back at a at a later meeting to be the tiebreaker?
Yeah.
Well.
I guess.
Hold on, uh, so I downloaded the twenty-one, twelve, twenty minutes, sorry, uh, twelve, twenty, twenty-one minutes.
Oh, Mr. Human.
And I believe there was a split vote on a on another item in that same meeting, not related to this one. Um, it was yes, no, yes, yes, no, no, so three, three. And the the minute say the motion failed, oh, I guess that's not a recommendation.
Right, and so they had to come back and and we had to, we had to have them.
Are you a question?
So we can table it until Riser comes back, we can amend the motion to.
Somebody could make a different motion, someone could make a different motion.
Yeah, someone can make a different motion.
So. We're not allowed to just have it fail?
Well, no, we need a recommendation to go with it.
Or to go on.
To go on.
We can have. So when we have a motion that says we don't recommend it, that's a no, this is a no too. Where what what's your authority for this?
Township attorney.
It's my mother used to do to me all the time when I was a teenager, right? You everything, there's your authority.
Run this till we get a seventh member, is there any way this motion could be changed to sway one of the three no's or the other way around or sway one of the?
What is it that the, what what motion? What part of the motion needs to be improved upon for anybody, does anybody wanna say what they would like to see different?
Right. Yeah, I mean, let's go back to signage, I mean, who, what do you think that means?
We don't even know that's why she, we don't even know that's why she didn't vote for it.
Okay, that's, well, that's, I know, I know.
So that's what I said, is is there?
I I can't think of of any other option here. You're following the code, you're saying you're gonna follow the code, two choices. One A, one B. Condo versus whatever. Is there a third thing on your top of mind which you don't see in our discussions that is bothering you? Or you think might be a better option? I mean, I'm speaking as a naive person here. I I I see there's a code, there's ordinance. There are two variations to it, depending how they structure it, and that's, that's, i- is that the end of the story or is there is there some, a story beyond that?
Well, why don't we ask them and let them?
I'd like to motion too. I would like to motion that we postpone. The suburban Lithia Dealerships final PUD cycle plan.
Second.
To what, postpone to win, sorry?
Uh, not the meeting. Well, they would have to have, we would have to have until all commissioners were present, we'd have to have everybody.
Okay. Uh, I would support that, yeah.
You moved, I support it.
Well, I mean, I support the friendly amendment.
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
The friendly amendment of all, um. All right.
I I would just add, I appreciate your patience, cause I I really don't wanna go down that road because they've been here for five and a half hours last week, another three and a half hours tonight and. Who knows, another two or three hours at the next meeting, so they've they've got a team here for.
It's a, I I.
Three meetings and three hours of minimum each meeting, so I I I can appreciate it, I I will, if it's it's tabled. I I'm hoping that maybe somebody may swing their vote.
You wanna change your vote?
I'm not changing mine, so I can tell you that's.
Well, I hear you. And that's based on a mixed use stuff, and you're not gonna change yours unless.
I'm not going on the record for car dealerships or dry fruits.
That's what I wondered. I didn't think you could.
Realize that might not be a legal defense, I have some whatever. I have some concerns about the plan anyway, but I don't, I don't think anything would change my mind about it. I think site needs another car dealership, like I need a hole in my head.
Okay, so that's the issue you have, guard, no guardian issue, your your issue is what, sorry?
Mine is ultimately the master plan, that this this is supposed to be mixed use development. We're here, you know, a year and a half later and maybe they've made a little progress, but I see a vacant site there for the next five years minimum, so. That's, I don't, I don't see that this is beating the master plan.
The vacant means the outlet?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my, that's, you'll be hearing me for the very beginning, that's my concern as well, but I'm I'm kind of. Going a little beyond that, and yours is signage? Or we don't know?
And outlet?
An outlet, okay. So maybe the outlet is the problem then? Three people, one, two.
So, um. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere tonight.
Yeah.
I what I propose is that we try to minimize the, uh, these folks on pins and needles about what we're gonna be deciding. So can we set up another special meeting? Soon.
Well, uh, we could postpone, I, is anyone else, is anyone gonna be gone for the the twenty-sixth? I mean, if. June. Our next meeting, which we are gonna do a working session, but I think if we made this.
We can bring this back and sit some line.
Mm-hmm. Start it, yeah. And I don't know.
Well, next question.
Yeah, it's Sunday. You're you're here?
I'm here.
I'm here too, goodbye, Alex.
Are you here?
I'm here.
I mean, this feels like the judge saying to the jury, go back in. And talk about it some more, I mean, this is crazy, David.
Condition that, yeah, we gotta confirm everybody's number here, so.
Let me, um, let me text him.
We don't have that banned during our meetings, do we? We can confirm that. Why don't you say, yeah, and if the friendly amendment was all, all of us would be in attendance, so we are an odd number.
I like all.
All of us, yes, okay, so we have a motion, uh, postpone, um, until all of us, yeah, attend at a meeting and.
Yes. Commissioner Human.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Hyde. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Culverton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Human and Moore.
And Moore seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we adjourned at ten thirty-one.
The meeting.
Recording stopped.